Hey everybody, welcome to the show. This is Dr. Levi with your show, The Dr. Levi Show. Today is December the 7th, 2016 here in beautiful LA. I gotta tell you, it's pretty chilly here in LA. I love this city, but I woke up this morning and it was cold. Now, cold here in LA is anything less than seventy degrees, of course. It was about like fifty. I mean, it was chilly. But, you know, life goes on. So I hope and know that wherever you are right now, today, you're making it a good day. I want to remind everyone, I want to tell you, I really appreciate you following, liking, and subscribing us on all our social media platforms, on Instagram, Facebook, Twitter. Again, it's just D R Levi Harrison, Dr. Levi Harrison. So, so thanks a lot. I also want to remind you that we have some new videos coming in about two to three weeks or so to open up the new year, to get you fit, to get you fabulous, to get you amazing, to help you optimize your life, and to remind you that the universe is conspiring for you. That whatever you think you're worthy of having, you're gonna get that. Whatever you believe you're worthy of getting, you will get that. So, give out more goodness, give out more love, more forgiveness, more acceptance. Stop the divisiveness, stop the judgment, stop the finger pointing. It's really about love and consideration of other human beings. So, it's really simple. Bottom line is treat other people, of course, we want to be treated. Now, I want to remind everyone also that in Duarte, on the 10th of December, at, uh, in the afternoon, uh, really it's gonna be around the clock all day in Duarte. We'll be giving a toy drive there with the Wish Upon A Toy Foundation, which would be great. We had them on the show, uh, recently. Really phenomenal organization that's really about giving back to the community. You know, and it was born out of someone's loss. Imagine having your father pass away on Christmas Day, and you still go out that day to give away toys, to talk to people, to, to bring about love and cheer, when you're still not even settling in your own grief. Uh, he was really, uh, that was really phenomenal story. So, please go out, and I want to remind you in my office in Glendale, of course, we have a big toy collection going on there. And of course, this Saturday, my run for cancer, the Spartan Race. And the Spartan Run will be really phenomenal in Castaig. And it's a five mile run with over twenty obstacles, I believe. So, that'll be pretty intense. It's cold in Castaig right now, but, you know, it's for a great cause. And so far, I think my team has raised, I don't know if it's all posted yet, but it's raised, I believe, a little over fifteen hundred dollars, close to, close to two grand. So I'm happy about that. And I want to thank everyone that gave. I'm really appreciative. You know, my grandmother died of leukemia. My really good friend and assistant, uh, died last month of, of cancer. So, I'm running for Rita, and I'm running for my grandmother, and, uh, um, you know, you have to keep moving on, you know? When they pass away, we have to keep doing the right thing, uh, even though they're not with us. Physically, they're always with us, spiritually, I believe. So, I want to thank you again for being supportive. And I want to tell you about our guest that we have on today. And then I also want to talk to you about, about diabetes. I had a lot of questions recently via email about diabetes. We've talked about it before, but I, I want to just go over some, a few things about that. So, we'll go over our medical moment, our medical minute, as we call it. And then I'll bring on our guest, Mr. Jorge Nuneo, who really has a phenomenal story. And he's a real charismatic gentleman, and is about, about service. His whole life is this platform of giving back to community. And giving back in a way that's really unconditional. Giving back in a way that's really built upon his principles of what can I do to make my community better? What can I do to be of service? What can I do to open the world to be more loving and more giving? And more importantly, more accepting of everyone, no matter what their socioeconomic status is. So, he, he has a great story. I was recently with him last week in his organization at The Big House in beautiful, uh, east LA, uh, exactly downtown LA. No, no, it's, uh, where's the city again?
South Central.
South Central LA. I think I was about to say Barles, I believe. In, uh, South Central LA, uh, where we talked about, we actually, he, he talked about the organization. He talked about The Big House, he talked about his foundation. And he'll talk about it again today because I, I think his story is so, uh, it's, it's what I call a meaty story. It, it has, it has extreme worth and value. And I think it'll impact your life the way it impacted my life. You know, my producer of the show, Janet, she and I, we talked about this several times. And just the intensity of how he's lived and what he's accomplished, we thought that it had value, that it would inspire you, the way it inspired me. And I like being inspired. I like having the show whereby we can elevate and lift and expand the consciousness about what it is about giving back, what it is about living in the highest order of humanity, which is really about service. Not what can I take, but what can I give? Not what can I just take away from everyone, it's what can I give to everyone? That's really the, the ticket. That truly, truly is. So Jorge Nuneo really lives that way. So, we're really happy he's taking time with his busy, busy schedule as the great social entrepreneur that he is, to spend time with us today on The Dr. Levi Show. Now, I want to talk to you briefly about diabetes. So, diabetes affects more than twenty-six point five million people in, uh, in the US. Now, with that said, we know that diabetes has two different forms. There's type one diabetes and type two. Type one, you're born with a certain type of pancreatic disorder, meaning that your body is not able to formulate and to deal with a glucose or sugar overload. And type two, it's when your pancreas is not functioning properly or when your body does not have appropriate receptors to deal with glucose. Now, how do we treat them? Well, the type one, they're treated when they're young with, with insulin. And type two, we treat that with different forms of medication, as well as with exercise and diet. And type one also has to be aware of their diet. Now, why is it important? Well, it's important because diabetes is one of the number one reasons, one of the leading causes, I should say, in worldwide, and in the US specifically, for what we call preventable blindness, preventable amputations, and for renal disorder, and for hypertension. So, it's important that you know and understand when it comes to your health, you are what, as I said before, you are what you eat, drink, and smoke. So, be aware of what you do to your body, because your body, a healthy, fit body can only reflect that if you live a healthy, fit lifestyle. And fitness is really about lifestyle. Now, the other issue about diabetes that, that, that really is so intense for me is that we really want to do what we can to impact our youth and young children so that they can eat properly, so they can make healthy choices. So instead of choosing the potato chips and the, the dye-filled products, and the salt, and the sugar, and the sucrose, and the, 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 uh, preservative type foods, we want them to eat properly, more fruits, nuts, vegetables, and grains. And really, we, don't forget, you live by example. So, as I've said before, if you don't buy, you won't eat it. If it's not in the pantry, if it's not in the kitchen, well, guess what? Your kids, your family, your, your wife, your husband, your spouse, your partner, your children, they won't eat it either. So be aware of that. You really want to make sure that you're projecting a healthy lifestyle. But more importantly, you know, life is experiential. That you're living a healthy lifestyle, that you are exercising every day, that you are doing what you can to make not only yourself healthy and fit, but also doing what you can to optimize the lives of other people around you. Because you do want to maximize everybody's potential. Because again, the world is not just about you. As beautiful as you may be, it's not just about you. It's really about everyone around us, making the world a better place together. That's what it's about, really weaving these really thick fabrics of humanity together so that that cloth is so tightly bound that there can be no divisiveness. There can be no judgment, there can be no hatred, there can be no badness. That's what it's about. Love, love, and love. As Vinicius Machado would say, "Love is the key," and I totally agree with him. Um, so, with that said, when it comes to diabetes, you, if you're having problems such as the following: dry mouth, urinating excessively, a feeling of intense hunger, uh, feeling of shakiness when you're not eating, uh, if you eat certain things that you, you feel like you have a headache, you don't feel well, you feel sick to your stomach, uh, you're having nausea, diarrhea, vertigo. It's a whole panoply of different things that can manifest for the diabetic. The bottom line is, you have to be seen by your physician or healthcare practitioner so they can measure your finger stick blood glucose level. That's your, your sugar level, basically, to see what that is. And also, it's important that you exercise. Now, many times, people ask me, "Well, if you're diabetic, can you still exercise?" Well, of course. You know, when I, when I, when I take care of athletes from around the world, from Olympic athletes to people on professional teams, the bottom line is I remind them that if you come into the office, you have an injury. Let's say you have an ankle injury, okay, well, you can still work your abs, your back, your biceps, your triceps. You know, if you have a, a wrist problem, okay, fine, you can work your calves, your, your glutes, your thighs, your hamstrings, the, and your stomach. The bottom line is that when you have an injury, you work around the injury. If you have diabetes, well, if you have an injury somewhere, you work around that. So diabetes does not preclude you from working out. That's the bottom line. So, working out is essential to the human experience. It's like eating and drinking water and going to the bathroom and other bodily functions, where we have to exercise. It's not an option. It's not something you do if you feel like it, when you want to. We have to make time to exercise. That's so important. So, that's our medical, maybe eight minutes versus one minute about diabetes. So, I want to thank you all again for joining me in spirit, at least, for the Spartan Run and race this Saturday for diabetes, not for diabetes, but for, for Cancer and Lymphoma Foundation. And thanks for going to the website and donating. I appreciate that. And now, with no further ado, I want to tell you about the great Jorge Nuneo and what he's doing. And better, I'd actually have him tell you about what he's doing. So, welcome to the show, Jorge. Happy to have you here.
Thank you, Doc.
You know, we have a lot to talk about. I want to hear about your life story. I want to know about what it was like when you were growing up as a kid with your mom and your dad. I want to hear about your siblings. Let's talk about that experience.
Well, uh, thank you for that. Um, well, you know, our story starts in the nineteen seventies. You know, my parents were immigrants from, uh, Mexico.
Yes. Which city in Mexico?
Jalisco, Guadalajara.
Yes.
So, um, you know, they came here like most people do for opportunity.
Yes.
And, uh, trying to achieve the American dream.
Yes.
And, uh, so my parents, you know, they, they met here in South Los Angeles. And as you probably already know, South Central, so you know, if you're, if you're an OG, it's South Central.
Yes.
If you know your mother is South LA, but, um, you know, uh, seventies, eighties, nineties in South LA is, I mean, it was tough. It was rough. It was really rough, you know, and so, as, uh, you know, when my parents got here, they, they met. And, uh, you know, they were trying to hustle. They, my mom, uh, started off working, uh, working at a, uh, factory doing clothes.
Yes.
Uh, my dad in a restaurant, but you know, and when they got together, they, um, you know, they thought of, you know, starting their own little business. You know, my mom helped my dad as in the gardening.
Yes.
So, that was like the beginning of being entrepreneurs, you know? If, if you don't have, you know, employment opportunities, then you have to create solutions.
Yes, you do.
And communities like South Los Angeles, that's, um, probably about forty to fifty percent immigrant.
Right.
Uh, entrepreneurship is like a solution to poverty.
Definitely.
To a way to get out. So my parents, uh, kind of showed that in our family really early.
How many brothers and sisters did you have?
I have, uh, two older sisters, Maricela and Lilia.
Yes.
And, uh, uh, they're entrepreneurs themselves.
Fantastic.
Right, so, so my parents, you know, pretty much, you know, you know, showed us some values really early about, you know, um, working together. So we're each other's kind of pillars.
That's really great.
And I think, um, something our parents showed, told, and, um, kind of showed with example, by example is, um, being each other, being there for each other.
Absolutely.
And, uh, but, you know, what, growing up, you know, my father was really interesting because, um, you know, my dad's one of those kind of, uh, he's an honest man. He, his integrity is like, you know, and he, you know, he's always about integrity.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, I kind of watched him, you know, be that man, you know? Where, wherever he was at, he respected anyone, if it's, um, from all different levels of economic status, you know, he treated everyone the same. And, and I always saw that. I thought it was pretty admirable, you know?
Right.
My dad was very charismatic, you know?
Like yourself.
Uh, I, you know, I try, you know? And, uh, so, you know, my parents, you know, working hard, and my mom decided to also start her own little business at home, home daycare.
Yes.
So she started working with young people, young kids and children. And while my dad went out there cutting grass, you know, and, you know, working on landscapes.
Right.
So, uh, what, what I saw there was this combination of, um, you know, running businesses and then also seeing the social impact, you know, through my mom's efforts.
Yes.
Just like childcare. Um, so, you know, you know, again, in the eighties, it was rough, man. You look at South LA, it was like, you know, the crack epidemic.
Yes.
You know, gang activities, racial tension. It was, it was, it was popping, you know?
And poverty.
Poverty. I mean, it was, think about it, like poverty, lack of, uh, jobs, I mean, because, you know, poverty comes with a lot of economic impact. There is, you don't know economics, so there's not much jobs.
And really, if you think about it, I always think of poverty as just this, this base of economic inequality.
Right.
Whereby many times, it's not about people who don't want to work. It's about people who don't have an opportunity to work.
Yeah.
So they have to do as your parents did. You have to create the opportunity. You have to go to a place of, okay, it's not there. I need money. I have to feed my kids. How do I create an opportunity? How do I create a sphere of economic growth to help me and my family? And your parents did it, like my mom did it.
And you know, and, and, and true, and then, uh, I think sometimes that people look at South LA like, you know, people are lazy, no, it's not that, man. It's like, we just, we have the talent, we just lack opportunity.
Correct.
So when you look at that, and, you know, historically, when I look back in retrospect.
Yes.
Um, I think of, where was the political will to, you know, really work with our community?
And to impact the community.
Yeah, impact positively, you know? Uh, we were over policed, you know, that crack epidemic, so, I mean, it was a perfect storm. Then, you know, you have nineteen ninety-two, we had the LA riots.
Yes.
I was right in the middle of it, right? You know, I was, uh, in the eighth grade, I had to be like thirteen years old. So your city was burning, right?
Literally, literally.
And, uh, so my parents, you know, did what they could, you know, um, went to, uh, you know, when my parents had the resources, sent it to a local Catholic school down the street. And, you know, that was their way, like, man, you know, some of these public schools were failing, you know? They were not doing well, so they were like, you know, "I want to put you in a Catholic school." At least they felt a little more comfortable to invest in our education.
Right.
And, um, so through that journey, you know, I think, uh, my parents, and something that my dad did, that I started to start, I just recently discovered, maybe in the last seven years, but, uh, when we were younger, my dad would collect toys throughout the year. And, um, and then we'll drive to Mexico and give them out to small towns in Mexico.
Wow.
And you know what? And he did that for several years. And, and actually, this year, I'm celebrating my miracle on Thirty-Fifth Street Toy Drive. It's the tenth anniversary.
Pretty amazing.
Right? So I remember when someone asked me, "Why are you doing this?" You know, I'd say, "It was my second time I'm doing it. I'll dress up like Santa. I got snow."
Right.
And I started collecting toys from everyone I knew, from my clients. And then it dawned on me like, "Wow, I remember I did this. My dad would do this when I was a kid." I just forgot. It was kind of like.
Pushed away.
It pushed away, you know, somewhere, but then it just kind of resonated. Cause I saw my dad's eyes, and he saw me, he was crying. And I'm like, "Oh my God, you used to do this when you were younger. I remember that."
You're still carrying the torch.
Carrying that torch, you know, and I figured like, you know, I don't want, need to go to Mexico. I have it in my own neighborhood.
Absolutely.
And, you know, my dad, you know, so I, you know, I learned a lot of stuff, you know, from my parents and.
It sounded like they really had big hearts. They sounded like they were, they were focused about keeping the family together, having the family recognize that we are our keepers. We have to be pillars of strength for each other. But it also sounds like it was about growth and creativity, like, like, like vision.
Right. It's vision, creativity, problem solving.
Right.
So my dad was always telling me, "Nothing's impossible."
He's right.
So, in my mind, I almost felt that way, you know? And so what, what made that a beautiful thing? Cause, uh, when I decided, you know, when I was in high school, and I decided, you know, I was a little indecisive. I wanted to be an architect.
Right.
And I remember my, and my counsel, my counselor was like, "With your grades, man, you're lucky to get into a junior college," right? And, and, because, you know, I think my parents, you know, thinking about my dad, you know, my dad to this day doesn't know read or write, you know? And, and my mom had a fifth grade reading level. But, you know, they, they were successful in their own way. I mean, their hustle, they got their own little apartments. They got their little real estate.
Right.
You know, you got the little retirement. They did their own thing, have their little properties. And, um, so, one thing that, that stood to me was this problem solving creativity and innovation, you know? So, when I decided to do something with my, uh, what I want to do, I end up choosing graphic design, right? And, you know, of course, you know, I didn't, I never knew of graphic design. And I saw a commercial, and I'm like, "Dude, I could do that." I just saw it. It was like a school recruit, you know, promoting their school for graphic design, animation. And it was like two weeks before school ended, and I wasn't decided. I didn't know what else I was gonna do. I saw that commercial, and I'm like, "I'm doing that." I called the eight hundred number. I called, I told my mom, "Hey mom, can we go visit this school and little campus site? And then see, and see," and she was like, "Okay, but I'm not signing no paperwork." You know, she was like, "I'm not signing no loans," you know?
Yes, yes.
And I was like an older senior. I was like nineteen years old. I was like, "Mom, I'm already eighteen, nineteen. I can do this."
Take care of yourself, yeah, right.
I just need you to be there. I just need some support. Like, I've never done this before, right? And so we did the tour, and then, you know, that was, uh, I came back home, and I was like, excited to have my little package, my little financial package.
Right.
And then, uh, I told my mom, "I want to do this. I could, I could see myself doing this," like, you know? And then my dad's, you know, so I went to the table, like, started filling paperwork out.
Yes.
And my dad's looking at me. He's like, "Man, why are you even doing that?" He goes, "You're not even gonna finish, you know? You're not even gonna, you know, we should just help me work, you know, with the gardening," you know? Cause my dad had this, his education was not a priority yet, you know?
Not yet.
Not yet, right? He thought maybe hard work, you know, helped me with my business, you know, with the landscape, right? And then he said, you know, "You know, you're gonna probably drop out, and you're gonna put all this money in." You know, because I, you know, I was in the, and high school was not a walk in the park, man, you know?
But you did it.
I did it. I went through, you know, and, and you know what? I've always been an average student in high school, but I always, for some reason, I knew that the grades was not a reflection of my intelligence.
Oh, it's not.
It's just the way I was, you know, schools I was going to, which is not, you know, and I had my own mind, you know? And, uh, but that's why graphic design just pulled me, was creativity.
Right. It was you.
Right. And when I find out about advertising and graphic design and marketing, that it's creative solutions, it's problem solving creatively.
Right.
So that combination just like.
It resonates with you.
Yes. It's like, dude, I got this, right? And, uh, I, you know, went through school, finished, uh, my, so my dad's like, you know, he was like, "You're not gonna finish." And I'm like, "Dad, I bet you I will."
Right.
And then how mu- he goes, "Five thousand dollars that I, I, I went, I'm gonna finish school." He's like, "Okay." And then he was, "All right." And then my mom said, "He's betting you better put it up." And so we got a piece of paper, a little napkin.
And he wrote it?
Wrote it down, like Jorge Nuneo and Dad, you know, we, and we put it in my mom's little safe. And, and then, uh, two years later, you know, graduation came around, and, uh.
What did he say? How did he feel? He must be very proud.
You know what's funny is when I started, you know, going through, so this is what happened. I went to start school, and then three months in, um, you know, computers at the time were barely coming into desktop, coming in, right? This is nineteen ninety-six.
Right. Very expensive, too.
Yeah, so my, you know, I was researching, saying, "Mom, you know, I'm gonna need my computer." And so I was like, "I need a monitor, computer, a scanner."
Right, to do your stuff.
And my printer. And, you know, it's gonna be about nine thousand dollars, right?
Right.
And I'm like, "Oh wow." So then, so they, my mom calls my uncle, like, "This is what he's asking for." And then he goes, "So you know what? Okay, I talked to your uncle. We're not gonna buy it from you. We're not gonna buy it for you. We're gonna invest. This is an investment."
Wow. It's pretty powerful.
Yeah, and I'm like, "Don't, don't trip. I got this, you know? I got this." You know, and I, and I told my head, I was telling myself my head, like, "Man, I'm gonna be the Kobe of graphic design."
Right, 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 right.
I'm, I'm gonna be just bomb, you know?
Exactly.
And that was just my mentality, my little head. I'm like, "Gonna be the."
The Kobe.
Yeah! And, and then I, you know, so I graduated and, um.
Who was that day like? I, I want you, I want you to take us back there and paint the picture of that day of graduation, like you were getting dressed that morning, putting on your shoes, thinking.
I'm getting ready, and I'm like, "Wow," and I'm getting my portfolio ready, because we had to do a little presentation at graduation. And I'll tell you a story at the graduation. So, again, like, my grades was not a reflection, right? But I had some good stuff.
Right.
I had like, I worked on one eight seven with Samuel Jackson. I was interning at this little agency in Santa Monica. And they started putting me on stuff like Warner Brothers work, and I started, you know, really.
Get into it.
Get into it. And I was really doing really good.
Right.
So when I showed my portfolio at the, at the school's, um, kind of like presentation, and a judge came by and looked at my stuff, and like, "You know, that's pretty good," right? And I'm like a twenty-year-old kid, you know? And, uh, he goes, "Are you working anywhere?" It's like, "No." You know what? I'm gonna give my card. I'm gonna have my office calling. Cause he was a judge. He was judging all, everyone. So it was about sixty. Everyone's work, but he came by my office and gave me his card. I'm like, "He's probably dead to everyone."
LA.
Yeah, yeah, right? So then a week later, you know, I get a call and, "Hey, you know, we're so-and-so. We would like to come in." And, okay, so then I'm like, "What?" You know, so I got ready my book. I go into the presentation.
So you have your portfolio and everything tight.
Portfolio ready, tight.
Right.
I'm excited, you know, I go there, and I'm, and I'm showing my, um, my portfolio to the partner, because he already saw it.
Yes.
His business partner. And then she's like, "This is good stuff. Okay, you know, oh, we also have, um, two other people coming from your office, or from your school, from your class, uh, Jeff and Ken." I never forget those names, Jeff and Ken.
Right.
And I'm like, "Aw, man, my head. I'm getting this job, man. These guys were the valedictorians."
Oh, it doesn't mean anything.
I know, but.
If it's for you, it's for you.
And these guys were like thirty-plus years old. They were already in the industry. They just kind of.
They were kind of.
They were seasoned. They just went back to school to get their degree. And then, so then I didn't get the job, but you know what was flattering? Out of the seventy people, they picked the two valedictorians and me.
That's pretty powerful.
See, that right there is like.
Powerful. That was a confirmation.
That was.
It really was.
Oh my God. I was like, uh, that, that was my little like, oh, like, you know, I took that.
You're right. Yes, the seed to plant.
Yes, I took that, and I'm like, "Got this." So then I started working for this agency, and then, and from there, man, I never looked back, man.
Cause the great thing about not getting that job, if you think about it, it, it really opened the door for you to get something better.
Yes.
You know, it didn't close the door. It opened a bigger door, opened a bigger window to say, "Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring you up to this, but this ain't for you."
Right.
But I got, I really got something that's for you. That's phenomenal, man.
And you know what? So I, uh, so I was at my internship, and then they hired me right after that. And then, then, then I think, I think they laid me, laid me off, you know, or something. I was out bumming my first job. They laid me off, all that.
Right.
And then my mom's like, and I'm all, in my room, depressed, like, "Oh, no one loves me."
Ooh, your mom. She was like, "Get up."
Yeah.
She was like, "Boy, get up."
Mexican as hell, and she's like, "Get your butt out. Get your little paperwork, little drawings you do, and put it, get your little resume."
And get out.
Get your butt out to get your job.
Exactly.
And I'm like, "Damn, I'm, I'm supposed to support my little, my little pity party."
She's like, "Andelay, andelay, andelay."
Hey, what happened to my pity party, right?
Nos famos dos semana's, andelay!
So, uh, yeah, you know, so then I, I got my portfolio.
Right.
And I'm one of those like, I happen to go out there, and I, I research all the top agencies in LA.
Yeah, you knew where to go.
You know, I did a, and then I printed out my resume. I were dressed up in a little suit, had my little portfolio, a little silver portfolio, remember that? No, actually, it was like a wood paneling. It was like, it was funny. But you know, I'm creative. I get away with that kind of stuff. And so I go around the city, just dropping on my agency, uh, different agencies.
Right.
Places I wasn't even qualified for. They were just like places you that were working on Apple.
But you just went.
I just dropped. I never know. You know, you gotta show up.
You gotta show up.
The art of showing up, right?
Exactly right.
And then I walked into this one agency, and, um, it was like, and it had like Titanic, and they had all these movie posters, Wild Wild West. And then lady in the front said, "Oh, I'm, you know, I'm here to just drop off my resume." And she, she was a interesting, um, receptionist, but I'm glad she was interested, because, because this was happening. She looked at my resume, you know, and, and let me show this to the owner really quick. She walks to the back office and just, and then she can't, comes back out with the owner, and they're like, "Hi, you know,[1561.54] Looking at your resume and it looks really interesting, come here, come in. Cause you know, so I'm, you know, I'm walking, the lady's showing me around, like, oh, so we work on this and it looks like some of the stuff you do. Just, I just drop, I'm just dropping by, you know, just drop my resume, but to me, I better just show up, you know? And um, and then, and then in my head, I'm thinking like, damn, what if she asked me how much I wanna make? So I'm like, ah, I'll say I'm thirteen bucks an hour, right? And I had my head like thirteen, cool, it was like twenty years ago or something, so. So then uh, she, she, she kinda likes my, you know, my energy, my attitude, then he goes, well, look, I'm going on vacation next week, we might need some help. Like, we, are you avail- how, how available are you? He's like, well, I'm pretty much available. And she goes, you know what, well, can you come in Monday? Um, you know, I'm not sure if you're okay with it, we pay twenty bucks an hour, are you okay with that? And I'm like, um, yeah, I can work with that.
I could, yeah, I could do that, for you. You get a break, it's Monday break day.
So uh, so then, you know, I, I, you know, I just um, I, I got, I got, I got hired and then, but you know.
What was it like when you went home to tell your mom and dad that you were hired?
So I go back to my, my mom and, and you know, tell her and she's like, no, can I, like, you know, it's almost like, told you. And then my dad is like, you know, just kinda not, my dad's a man with few words. He's that man on the couch right there, you know, kinda like.
When he does speak, you better listen.
Exactly, right. So uh, so then I, you know, from there, I just, I started really, you know, working my butt off and then uh, within like. Three months, like, I was like, the only designer there, cause I, I was so fast, the two other designers, I like. Blew by them, you know, cause I, I emerged right where the computers were coming in and graphic designers were transitioning into computers. For me, it was a tipping point, I was just a kid that just knew all the graphics and all the Photoshop and all that. So I, my timing was perfect, I do three D and I was just a little overachiever. And, and my hustle was like, it was on, because again, it's, you from South Central, man, you, you don't take nothing for granted. And when you're next to people that are just kinda like taking life easy, like, oh, man.
Then you shine.
Yes, I shine. And it's not like, you know. Just how you did, that's just how it is, right? And I remember that my um, my boss at the time and, you know, asking to my mentor, you know, that's why, I read a book and I heard about mentors. And I was like twenty one years old now and, and I was a little late bloomer on mentors, but I read this book about mentors and how they help you cheat in life, right? They move forward faster. So I reached out to my, you know, my boss and I told him, you know, you think a mentor, you know, it's like, yeah, you know, and I was like. I'm listening, I'm a hard worker, I won't complain, you know, I just get things done. And I was, and then I read all these books, like, they just, just look like, make things look easy, you know, and I've always been that guy, I get shit done and it just happens. And I remember he, he tells me, hold on, he like, how'd you get here, man, like? It's like you, you grew up in South Central, like, all the drive by shootings and all like, and at that moment. He'll, I didn't realize I wasn't supposed to be there. I just had like a dream, I wanted to be the Kobe.
You wanted to do it.
I was so focused that I didn't realize that if I was facing all these obstacles, I just. And I think people just saw my, just my, my, my.
Your willpower and drive.
My drive, so they just, you know, gave me, they were just letting me be, but he's, he did question that and I never thought about that, like, you, you know what? Right, you know, I'm like, and all these, and I started looking, reflecting on all the things, on my obstacle challenges and. And uh, but.
Doesn't, you, you think about that though, isn't that a real testimony to your strength of character and also shows that. We are not defined by the communities that we come from, myself coming from the ghettos of New Orleans, yourself coming from South, South LA, South Central. We can come from those places, they're not bad places, they're places without opportunity, there are places without economic advantages. But it doesn't mean that we can't go back and help our communities and it doesn't make us less than.
Right, right, and I think sometimes we don't know that and I think we need uh more people around us that could give you that. Roadmap, right? And I, and I know, and that, and that's where it takes me to my next phase of my life. Where, you know, I started working to all the top agencies, you know, working on projects like Jurassic Park and The Grinch and uh Spider-Man, all these. You know, I was. Yeah, I was all over Hollywood, you know, just doing my thing and I was at bouncing, you know, different places and, and you know. You know, it's a trip, cause like, by, by the time I was like twenty three, twenty four, I was already making six figures.
Right, which is pretty amazing.
And it's crazy at the time, like, you know, and I remember, you know, I'm like, damn, what am I gonna do with this money? So like, I bought my first house when I was twenty three. You know, and my mom was telling me like, put your money into something, I wanna be popping bottles at the club, you know, and so I'm like, man, I better put my money somewhere, you know? And, and I thought, you know, so my parents brought me some, some of these values that they kinda shaped me. And uh, you know, so I made certain invest, smart investments really early. And um, and then I was like, maybe I was twenty four, I was like twenty six and I'm thinking. Man, I couldn't find my own home, you know, I wanted to find my own agency, like, I wanna go uh, work for someone that just kinda really filled me. And, and I, I started discovering like, there wasn't, I needed to create my own home. You know, and, and I remember this one agency that I applied for when I was really young and they were like, no, you're not, you, you don't have enough experience. And they finally, they had another opening for a senior art director, like, man, my portfolio is awesome, right? So I'm like, I'm applying for them. And then um, I applied and then they finally got back to me, he's like, yeah, we like your stuff, but he's just not the perfect match. And I'm like, man, forget this, man, you know what? I'm starting my own thing, you know? So then I started doing all this freelance work outside my day job and then I started, you know, people started getting familiar with my work. Right, and they were like, whoa, you did that project, oh my god, can you, you know, all these independent producers will reach out to me and filmmakers and directors and. Small distributing companies, so they started kinda like reaching out and I'm started working, I'm doing my house on the side and I'm working like two, three, four in the morning and I had my day job. So finally until I got to a point that my, uh, my jo- my work outside my day job was like. So I jumped ship, um, for, and then, you know, I do, I kind of, yeah, I jumped ship and then. Um, and then I had another mentor at the time too that was uh helping me.
And what was that like when you, when you did jump ship? Was there any fear with that or was it just total faith in like, I can do this, I'm worthy of this, I can make this happen?
It was all that, it was uh, I could do this, the numbers look good, you know, I, I have resources, my, you know, I have certain friends that I could tap into. And I have, I'm very resourceful, like, man, I don't do anything by myself, you know, I, I, I.
It's good to call it the, the village.
I'm big on that, I think, you know, you know, I'm not where I'm at because of, on myself. I did my part, but everyone kinda.
Rallyed behind you.
Yes, you know, or helped there, you know, a little helping there and here and there. And um, so I started my own, um, my own little design company off my den. And uh, and uh, you know, it just kind of chiseled away, I was twenty six, twenty seven years old and. One of my two buddies were uh, were having their own little company, doing business cards and, hey, guys, come with me, man, I have all this work. You know, and, you know, hire, listen, let's kinda merge our companies, come on board and, you know, so I absorbed them and they came on board and. And uh, you know, so, so this is, you know, like maybe twelve years ago.
And that was risky to do, you know, because business with friends, that can be very funky real quick.
You know, you're right. This friendship was very unique because it, it, it was friends that I went to high school with, right? But then they all, we worked together, we started together, design company, designers. I went the school route, my friend decided to start working into design. And then I got the education and I'm like, and it got some, you know, structure for like business and. But I don't do business with friends, but this one was very unique and.
And what think, what do you think made it unique? The creativity, the creativeness of everyone involved?
The creativity, but also the respect for each other's strengths and talents and everyone stood in their lane.
See, that's great, because often there can be ego. And ego and friendship, if that's not decompressed, there is drama, I've had it myself with friends. I've tried three times, not been able to do that one.
This one has been the first one and the most blessing one.
Well, you should say thank God.
Thank, yeah, thank God, baby. And cause the, the two, after that, which is like hell.
There you go.
And, but I'm like, damn, I was trying to recreate this first one, I, I thought I figured it out. But it was a blessing.
There's no cookie cutter mold for it either.
I'm like, how was I ever pull this one off? And the other two that are more instrumental, you know, I'm like, no, I don't do, I couldn't pull it off twice.
I, I tried myself.
They had a, had a music label after that, it didn't work out, I still have my agency, they didn't try the clothing line. And, you know, partnership didn't work out, but my, my design has always been the anchor. Get me through stuff, right?
That's you, you.
Right, and then uh, so, you know, I decided like maybe when twelve years ago. I, I would say, I was growing, I'm like, can I move out of my home? So I bought this one property in so, in a bigger property, you know, the property, the big house. Yeah, it's abandoned, those are cracked out, it was bad. Um, and uh, so I bought this property and I'm thinking originally, maybe I do this as, as an investment. Yeah, something, I'm more like, maybe student housing or something, right? And then um, and then I was also looking around for office space and I was thinking like, looking in downtown Lofts and. And then I was, and then one of my clients um, uh, from Image Entertainment, he wa- he, I was showing the property, cause he's doing some investment too. And he's holding it like, why don't you do your agency here? Like, I know you're looking at it, but this is a big place, so you could do your agency. And I'm thinking in my head, man, but this is like South Central LA, this is not sexy, like, you know, this, I'm doing Hollywood stuff. And then I really thought about it, cause then I'm thinking like, man, I'm buying this other property, it's like seven hundred thousand and it's. Two parking spaces, fourteen hundred square feet, this house is five thousand square feet, twelve parking spaces.
Yeah, you go.
Right, and I'm thinking like. But I have to, eh, but I really think about, well. How am I not gonna let my clients pigeonhole me to be this urban agency, right? Like, all you do is urban movies, like, nah, man, I do. I do general market, man, I like Spiny Nemo, like all that, it's not just straight out of Compton, you know, cause they, they, you know, you're a person of color, you gotta be really careful in this game, right? They're gonna start putting you in this. Box, I'm like, nah, man, I do it all. But then I thought about USC, USC is down the street and they're in South Central LA. USC is a, a world renowned institution. That is in the hood. If they could pull that off, I could pull it off. So that gave me like, bro, I got this, you know, I could, I knew, cause you, you constantly have to tweak your, your way you see things and the vision and. And, and I just, so then I started changing, I changed my mission and then I'm like, this is my neighborhood, man, this is where I grew up with. And if I could be a positive um, influence or, you know. Mentor or something, you know, in my community, like, I'm right there, dude, this, I, I didn't have that growing up. So that was the beginning of the big house, you know, I um.
Let's talk about the big house though, because we, we were recently there last week for the red carpet event. It, it was, it was a great event, cause it was really about bringing together community, not only the celebrity aspect of it, which was really wonderful and the red carpet was great. But also the feeling of community, that everybody belongs, because so often in many communities that where we come from. There is this, what I call, this change and this extraordinary gentrification that occurs. And therefore the native people who are there are no longer there, they're pushed out, and then the price of the property goes up, it's like, I used to live there. Now I can't even afford to walk past it. You know, so I, I get it, it was, it was a great event.
Yeah, and the beauty about the house, big house, is that it, it, it was transformed from, it transformed from within. You know, it's, it was a native that started the transformation versus someone like, hey, let me go into the neighborhood. Make a difference, I would parachute in.
And I'm gonna parachute out after I do it.
Exactly, right, so it was an organic process, you know, for me thinking I would move my office, sorry, you know, I started remodeling the second floor so I could move in, cause. It was not in moving condition, it was bad. And um, you know, I gutted the whole thing from electrical, blah, everything was gutted. And you know, um, so, I um. I, when I went in there and, you know, every time I go to, you know, by, by a proper, my mom comes with me, I'm like, mom, what you think? The energy was good, you know?
Yeah, felt good.
Felt good, and I'm like, alright, uh, so I moved my agency there and I told my guys, first of all, like, guys, man, we're moving to South Central, like, over here, like, what? A little trip, you know, you know, we'll work, make it work, you know? Cause it's important to me, like, okay, I know it's South LA, but then I have to also make my employees feel safe. And if I wanna recruit talent, then they need to feel safe. So I started, you know, getting involved, my community started like, do my block club and just started getting involved, boy, did I sign up for something, it was. That, that was the beginning of my transformation of like, you know, being more socially conscious, cause then, as I started getting involved to organize my blog. And then I started really engaged, seeing myself in all these young people. A year in, I remember uh, seeing all these kids playing outside and I read this book about just sharing and share economies and like, all this collaborative stuff, you know?
Sharing creativity.
Yeah, sharing spaces and all this stuff, you know, and, so I remember I walked outside and I, and I asked the young kids that were skateboarding, hey, guys, like, what do you guys need up here? You know, what do you need, we're gonna, and then, and then there was, they said all the different things, so that Christmas, I bought a skate park. So I have a huge property, saw it. You know, showed up one morning and just bought the skate park and I put it all there and I told the kids, kids, you guys come in, man. It's a safe place for you to be, cause the streets were busted, man, they had potholes everywhere. My community has been abandoned, man, I mean, it, it's, you know, we, we talk about decades of neglect, you know?
Generational neglect.
Generational neglect, you know, from a political standpoint, from an economical. Social, all this stuff. And I'm like, you know what? This is my little space, I could, I could control of it. I could invest in it, I could do my part. And then, you know, I started kinda working and building the house up, you know, and inviting my community in and we started, you know, and then I started working on the street, I'm like, hey, how do I get involved in my community? I reached out to a, a mentor of mine in Watts and I, and I asked him like, you know, how do I get involved? My community, and he goes, start introducing yourself to your local neighborhood council, to your captain, to your, find out who your councilman person is. You know, and just start, you know, civically involved, right? And my parents never taught me none of that stuff, cause again.
No, they were just providing.
They were trying to get things, pay the bills and, you know. And um, so I uh. I just started getting involved and I'm like, hey, you know what, you know, I remember, let's do a, uh, uh, maybe a health fair, you know, we, I realized, you know. It was a lot of health issues, so I ca- I created this uh Hollywood Health Fair, Halloween Health Fair and Carnival. So we did a street block party and uh, my, my uh, my son's godfather, a good friend of mine. Uh, he, he's a doctor, a general doctor, he had a, we made a room and then people were lined up to see him. Yeah, evaluated, recommendations, uh, we had, we collaborated with local resources and organizations to do screenings and. So I started just doing all this stuff and I started just doing it on my own, like, you know what, I, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta just do it. That's, there is a need here, and then as you start getting, just doing things, you know, you start changing, you know?
And your community changes too.
Right, oh man, so I remember, it was four years in, and then I remember wa- driving on my driveway, it was night, night. And I, I was turning, I was turning, I was going down the street and I saw two kids on their bike, rolling, you know, kinda chasing each other, playing, and then I see. A couple of adults in the corner chilling at the neighborhood store. And at that moment, I realized, I did something, this would never happen. Because kids will feel afraid of being drunk, riding their bike at night. Frightened, and then, and parents hanging out in the corner talking, chatting. Corners will be drive by shootings, man, you know, all this stuff, so I knew already, I was, I, I activated my neighborhood.
Right, you started to change.
I started changing it, you know, we started working together and neighbors started talking to each other more, see, we come, we, we come out from a traumatic. Traumatic background, for think about eighties, nineties, like, you got bar windows, you know, everyone's tra- it's trauma, right? So for you to do, start doing this, I had, I created an, another event in the middle of the street, had lucha libre. Wrestlers jumping in the middle of the street with a ring. Just in the, in the, on your street. Never has ever that been done before, but to me, I'm just being creative and innovative and I'm looking at things that were not, and I'm, you know, concepts and stuff, you know, and.
It's making it happen.
It was shaking things up in my neighborhood, you know, and I saw something there, like, you know what? There's so many possibilities and people are willing to it, just sometimes, we gotta try new things, we were, we were dormant. And, and this, and then the whole, this whole idea of like, how do we, we, we empower, how do we start activating the talent that we have in our community? And I think that's what I started doing, like.
You, you me tell, you've done it so well, you know, as you were talking, I was thinking several things, one is, you didn't just cause change to happen in your community. You, there was one word that comes to my mind for you and the community, that was wake up. You know, you said, let's, let's, I wanna wake up creativity, I wanna wake up partnership, I wanna wake up community, I wanna wake up cooperativity. I wanna wake up the spirit that we have here, because we're more alike than we are different. And that we all come from the same basic loss, well, let's turn that loss into a win for everybody. And you did that by weaving this thread of commonality with everyone, how do we be nice to each other, how do we speak to each other, how do we protect each other?
Right, on the human element. And I, I, you know, as I started doing all this, then I, then I decided, you know, I need to scale this up and I, so I started.
I love that statement, scale this up.
So then I um, I founded a, an organization called Level South, which is my nonprofit. And um, in, in our focus was gonna be entrepreneurship, technology, things that were. You know, I did an assessment, like, what was the need here, you know, and you know, when you start a business, you wanna check out what other people are doing, that way you're not duplicating the effort. Cause if they're doing that, could just go to you and help you, you know, but I realized there was, there was no organization that could spearhead, that was spearheading. Technology or entrepreneurship and kinda like that world and entertainment and stuff and, you know, having all these relationships, I'm like, let me leverage them. So I, you know, met um, Dr. Penn, which one of my professors at LA Trade Tech. And he helped me co-found it, you know, this man is like, he saw my vision, and I remember I invited him over, like, I want you to show what I'm doing and, you know, I'm a student and he's like, eh. I ain't got time. And finally, he finally convinced me, he came over, he saw the big house, he saw what I was doing, my operation, like. It's good, you know, and I'm like, this is what I wanna do, this is what I've done. You know, and, 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 and then he, I wasn't even talking about New York South, and he's saying, no, I'm gonna help you with that, man, I'm gonna help you found, I'm gonna help you uh establish it. Get your file one C three.
That was Dr. Pence.
Dr. Penn, you know, you know, it was funny at the time, I'm thinking like, you know, I wanna get more involved in my community, I'm thinking, man, I need to find that Latino. Uh, you know, Vieira Gosa, you know, guy, and it was Dr. Penn, African American, you know, he came in my life, you know?
It made the change.
It made the change, you know, and you never know who comes to you.
Who's gonna bless you.
Right, and Dr. Penn is like PhD, two masters, man, a beast. Like, what is he doing with his little twenty eight year old, you know, with a little big, you know, but I guess he saw something, he saw, he saw. And uh, he helped me kinda put it together and he mentored me and, and really started kinda shaping me, you know?
He didn't have a lot to do though, cause don't forget, the frame was already there, so he just took and made it, just even polished it, but you already, you'd already done the work.
Right, and then we started going to these community meetings and started getting involved civic leadership, like being at the table, you know?
You gotta be at the table, you gotta show up.
Cause if you're not at the table, you're gonna be on the menu.
You're gonna be on the menu, exactly right.
So I'm sitting there and I'm taking Dr. Penn, what are they saying, man, wh- 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 what is this? Cause all this jargon, you know, like all this nonprofit stuff, government stuff and, you're like, don't worry about it, we'll talk about it later.
I love that, man, and I gotta quit, before you say anything, Jorge, I wanna talk, you're gonna be running for councilman, I wanna hear about that, because we only have like a minute left, believe it or not, let's talk about that.
Well, you know what, with all this experience and learning about what's going on, the issues in my community, I'm like, it's time, it's time to change the leadership here. You know, we've been decades of politically neglect, political neglect, and, and you know, we never had a native from this community to. And have the best interest for the community, and that really just drove me, like, I'm, I'm gonna do this, man. Uh, in my community, and people were kept coming, eh, Jorge, you know, you should look into this, man, you know, we, we got this new councilman, he's, he's naive from the area, he came from Inwood. Comes in with political debt, you know, he's not about this community, man, it's like a real estate agent, man, just trying to sell our, our community out. And then finally, I'm just, you know, I got this, man, I'm willing, I'm gonna, you know, I've done this for twenty years, I'm ready for something else, I could do, I, I, my community knows where I'm about.
And you're investing in community, you have a legacy of, of transformation, of change, of involvement, of activism, of activity, of advocacy, you've been there.
Right, and I think that's gonna take that collaboration, you know, the job is gonna be difficult, man, you know, but we hold hands together.
Like you said, you call on your research, do it together.
And, and, and I live it.
Oh, that's for sure.
And I think that's what our community is, is that transformational change that comes from within.
It's fantastic. Well, I wanna remind everyone to please contact Jorge Nuneo, phenomenal speaker, he'll be running for council, let's talk about that again, for which district?
So that my, uh, I'm running for the Los Angeles City Council District Nine, which is South Los Angeles area. It encompasses uh Core Southeast, South, South Los Angeles in the east side, Convention Center USC, almost to Watts. Uh, Alameda on the east and about Vermont western, some parts of Normandy on the west. And it's very, you know, and this district is one of the poorest districts in the city, in the county.
You ready to bring about the change? How can they contact you?
You can find me on uh social media at um, uh Jorge Nuneo for city, for city council or Nuneo C D nine. So if you type in Nuneo C D nine, I'll pop up on Instagram, pop up on social media, on my website is NuneoForCouncil.com.
Awesome. I wanna thank Jorge Nuneo for being here today, phenomenal guest, with great ideas, who's making a difference in his community, but more important. Jorge is about advocacy, activism and vision, so if you want someone who's gonna be in office to do the right thing, to speak the right thing, who is of and from the community. He has to be the guy. So I wanna thank him for taking time to be with us, please reach out to him, great speaker and a great man of great heart and vision. So I wanna thank you again, it's Dr. Levi. So I wanna thank you again, it's Dr. Levi, I wanna thank Jorge Nunez for joining us and please reach out to him. And think about either volunteering your time or your resources, he needs your gifts and your talent. And he's the guy who will really benefit the community from that. This is Dr. Levi Harris, I really appreciate everyone joining us. Remember, be kind to the veterans, those women and men are the true heroes of this great country. And today, of course, is Pearl Harbor, happened this day, December seventh, nineteen forty one. And we know about that devastation, so again, we really appreciate all the lives that were given to keep our freedoms. We're very grateful. Take care everyone, it's Dr. Levi, see you soon, Spartan Race this Saturday, Casta, come out, bye.